I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mr. Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Zanstra is absent, Commissioner Salzweater is absent, Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Ha?
Here.
And Chair Hanley is absent.
Motion to approve absences? Do we have enough to do this?
Yes, yes, you're hired. Humbled to accept the absences.
I'll start.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
You have to call for it.
Oh, what?
You have to call for it, ayes and nays on the motion.
Ayes, okay.
Ayes and nays.
Call aye?
Yes.
Yes.
Nays? We're good now?
Yes.
Okay. Now we can go to the agenda? Approval of the agenda?
I will move for approval of the agenda as presented.
One second.
Okay, all in favor, yea?
Yes.
Nays? October fifth on the number three. Approval of the minutes of the previous meetings? Of the A, October thirteenth?
I'm looking for approval.
One second.
Aye?
Yes.
Yes.
Nays? Approval of November first?
November third, as presented.
One second, excuse me.
Yeah, it's all good. Aye?
Yes.
Yes.
Nays? Okay, public comments? Nobody's right?
I don't think they're right. Yeah, I don't think so either.
Okay, all business? Ordinance amendments? Temporary use?
Yep, and meeting asses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll see in front of you the eleven-three-fourteen draft that you should have gotten a few days ago. The stuff you see highlighted is things that were changed based on the comments from the commission at the previous meeting. So you'll see on the first page, under item three, there's a, we changed the part about using a mandatory policy, we changed only two recreational vehicles there. And then on the second page, there was some discussion about having a little more clear idea of what exactly, you know, what constituted notions or what kinds of things we're looking to avoid. And so you'll see under, number one there, that we specifically list noise orders, vibration deskmole, so on and so forth. Those aren't the only changes that I had. I still know on the first page that for this to really be effective, I think that the council will need to make an amendment to the peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchant ordinance for this to work. And that is because under that ordinance, the definition for what a transient merchant is, to me, it needs to be something that is basically the same as like the temporary kind of networks, times, you know, not your typical, you know, building occupying, tax paying kinds of enterprise. And so I think even if this were adopted in zoning, that the, this general ordinance would probably still sustain in the way of this probably working and there'd be a conflict there. So before this goes anywhere, I think that something will have to change either, you know, we don't go forward with what we've done so far, or the council makes, you know, decision to modify that definition somehow, or to tweak that ordinance a little bit so it can allow the zoning part to work out, so.
So we have to wait and do that, yeah? That what we should do?
Yeah, I don't know if, you know, what would be the most appropriate way to do that if you, if the planning commission should request maybe that be looked at, or Jim, do you have any thoughts on what the council would think of that, or what their typical processes for, if there hasn't been any in some recently with respect?
I would assume that the city attorney would have to look at it and probably make a recommendation to the council, but maybe Mark can?
Yes, that's what would have to happen.
We're talking about?
I think we should say something about the $300,000 fee that each one of us would get?
Yeah.
As long as he's going to be there agreeable.
Oh, no.
Skip right over that one.
If it has to do with money...
Do I hear a resounding no?
Mark, what we're talking about is this issue with the temporary uses. I have a note on the amendments that says that I think that, that ordinance that deals with peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants?
Yeah.
I think that all need to change somehow, because looking at the definition and that ordinance for what, for how a transient merchant is defined, to me, it's pretty much the same thing as what we're talking about here with the Christmas trees and tents and stuff. So there's a bit of a conflict there. And again, if we should, and I guess I'll leave it to you guys, should I send it to Dick Glenn and see what he thinks? If he has a recommendation, or should we have council kind of mull this over a minute first?
I think it'd be worth getting Dick's opinion first. At the, we've had some discussions at council level about that whole section of quota ordinances, the transient merchants, peddler solicitors, and looking at updating it and maybe even streamlining it a little bit. Because, for example, one of the first things that I ran into when I started here was on solicitors and the way the ordinance is written, it could be construed as though we may have to require a permit from Girl Scouts to go door to door to sell Girl Scout copies. And I'm not sure that that was the intent of the ordinance, and I told the Girl Scout leaders, go ahead and go door to door and sell Girl Scout copies. So there's a lot of, I mean, those ordinances are several years old, and there's a lot of revisions that we really need to have some discussion about. Some of the newer issues are food trucks and things like that, which we haven't addressed at all, which I don't know if we're on the zoning side or if we're doing on the property side.
Yeah.
So it's a huge project, because the whole thing needs an overhaul. But perhaps getting some reading from Dick on the changes on the zoning side and calling any impact with the current quota ordinances that we have on those issues.
Okay, I can, um...
Might be helpful.
Yeah, I can give him a call then and send him to see if he thinks.
And I'll make a note and include an update to the council just to get it started again on their radar screen again, too.
So we need a motion to go through and take the annuaries and vice versa, right?
I think at this point, I mean, you could have the motion sent to the table, the discussion.
Tell the lawyer sees it?
Yeah, and you might want to put an actual date on whether it'll come back up on the agenda, if you want to give it one month or two, I don't know what, you know, time it lines out.
Should take more than a month.
Yeah, and typically, I mean, you don't have to motion it table, or we just leave it on the agenda.
Leave it on the agenda as it's right now?
Yeah.
Onto the next one?
Table can take like several different forms, and one of them, you're right, is a two-day circular. So we're going to get, so we're going to find out if Dick will maybe just bring it back to you next meeting?
Okay.
But you're not ready to act on it yet.
Oh, wait till the next month after, whenever he's done?
Perfect. I'm caught up now.
Okay, so we can now move on to mixed use district?
That's A.
Changed a few things in there?
Yeah, there's a memo, there's a November four memo on the issue.
Yeah, the memo kind of highlights some of the key things that we talked about. You know, first of all, thanks everyone for coming and sacrificing the Saturday morning and evening, the unseasonably cold weather to talk about this stuff. You know, I felt like it was productive and, you know, there was some good discussion and some good feedback. On that memo that you guys have, I kind of summarized some of the kind of key things that we talked about. You know, one of them that I mentioned, I think it's the first one on that list, is that we talked about what to do with the library?
City Hall.
In City Hall. Kind of torn on that, because one of them is not conforming now, and the other one's not. And then by changing it, I'll just flip the one that's not conforming to make it not conforming and vice versa. So again, it's, I don't know if it makes a huge difference either way to me. If you guys are more comfortable with it being kind of left alone and not changing the zoning, leaving it as public facilities, that's fine with me.
Probably always going to be that way.
Well, the changes in the rezoning as well.
I would change as well, I have to do something.
Yes.
Yeah, we could leave that in there.
It's kind of like school property is right now is public facilities and...
You did, I seen you did one for the commercial or historic, too. Early building historic, if it burns down?
Yeah, basically, I just, I just said if it's recognized, if it's identified as a historic resource by the historic district commission, then it can be rebuilt with original non-conforming status, no matter if it's destroyed 20% or 98% or...
Would they have an option, or would they have to build it to historical?
I honestly don't know what would happen if they were to be completely destroyed, if they have to put it back or not. That's an interesting question, because a lot of historicness of it is pretty much gone if the thing is totally...
After you rebuild, all new.
Yes, yeah. So I honestly don't know the answer, that I've never...
Sorry I brought that up?
No, it's a good question.
It's a good question, and what, where would historic weigh in, and do they even have any jurisdiction?
I mean, if it's burnt to ground, I mean, they would have the option to build it back the way it was bought.
Right. What you're doing here from a zoning standpoint is just opening the door, and then whatever historic requirements are there, it's certainly placed.
Right. Some other changes that I made is you'll see on, I put them on the fourth page, where they have the table, maybe this is the fifth page, that has a table with all of the dimensional requirements in there. I carved out a little exception, a subsection B, where we have single and two-family dwellings and a mixed use kind of get a little bit different treatment as far as the location of the buildings. I mean, again, that was in response, just kind of walked around, looking at some of those houses that...
Yeah, they're in there?
Yeah, they're there, everyone's comfortable with them. You know, we didn't, no one really noted any major problems from, you know, walkability or anything like that, so it's okay. I just know where they are. So I increased that setback to 25 feet, noting that, making the minimum zero, so if somebody wants to build in a house and they want to put it right on the street, they're certainly more than welcome to do so, we're not going to tell them not to.
To just be, have to be conforming?
Mm-hmm, right. And then I also put this requirement in here about the garages. There's a little graphic down there that requires that the garage be offset behind the front facade of the house, so you don't have the, what they call, quote unquote, snout houses. But it had just had a blank garage wall basically facing the street, you can't really see the facade of the house. You know, even by flipping that the other way around, so the garage is, you know, isn't really visible, as you look down the street, it really trades a much different environment. And up in there, I took out the requirement about the minimum building front, about, you know, if it has to occupy 80% of the build to the, and all that stuff. I took that part out, because again, one, I don't think any of them could comply with that requirement, nor did they work within what necessarily want to have a huge amount of glass, transparent glass, I mean, I don't know, anyway. Again, I think some, in a lot of ways, I don't necessarily see those as huge issues, because, you know, I don't know that a lot of people, if you don't want to build a house on there, just build a big brick box or something and not have any window, you know, and not deal with some of those things, so. I'm not too concerned about those. And then, those are all the changes that I had, and right away, I've been, I was kicking this around the office with a number of other planners, and as I guess that we're working on the parking study in the downtown plan and stuff right now, and so there are a couple of revisions that we were talking about adjusting, one of which would be the exception in the C2 district, that I also expanded to include the mixed use district. And I'm in section seven on the third or last page, that allows off-street parking required for non-residential districts to be located within 250 feet of the site, so basically if you can't provide, if I can demonstrate that there's enough parking within a certain radius, in this case 250 feet, then that can count towards the requirement. We're thinking about expanding that a little bit to make it, you know, 300 feet or 400 feet or something. That could change a bit depending on what happened with that parking study, which should get wrapped up here in the next few weeks, I think we can kind of work with that in the meantime. And then we also talked a little bit about, and I haven't really decided what I want to do yet, kind of from what the practical reality is for a lot of small towns. We currently in this mixed use district, under the special land use section, we require first-floor office buildings, you know, medical offices, dental offices, professional, administrative kinds of office uses. We make them go through a special land use process for that. And talking at the office group kind of thinking, well, maybe that should just be permitted by a rate, because we're not, because the question is if someone comes in with that, you know, they want to build an office building with office on the ground floors, the city really interested in saying no to that or making them go through a lot of extra procedural requirements, I don't know that we would be interested in that. The way it is now, I think, encourages more activity on the ground floor, but again, thinking about the theory and then thinking about reality and what we might do when somebody comes in with that are kind of different things, so I'm kind of interested in your thoughts on that one. Specifically, I'm looking at sections, this would be on the fourth page, if you look at section, the proposed section 16A dot oh three, and there's sub-items F, G, and H, which talk about special aid uses, and then we have office buildings for executive, administrative, professional, and so forth, medical and dental offices, and banks of credit unions, savings alone, and so on and so forth. And those are special aid uses if they're on the ground floor, if they're on the upper stories, and they would be by right. Just something that we were thinking about, just making all of those things uses by right, whether or not they are on the first floor, or on the second floor, or on the third floor. So I'm just interested in your thoughts on that one, but otherwise, I don't know if you guys have further thoughts or changes, if you'd like to see any of this stuff?
That's saying that you want it wouldn't matter what, for a ground?
Correct. It would be allowed by right on any floor.
That's okay with you?
Yeah.
To me, it makes more sense.
I like the idea. So that's our opinion.
Okay.
What else? Any other questions go ahead?
Not that.
Not that?
Yeah, mixed use.
So what do we, want to just wait for, what do we got to wait for on this anymore?
Um, well, before we go forward, the planning commission obviously would have to schedule a public hearing and notify the property owners, I don't know if that's something that you want to do now, or if you want to, I don't know why we would need to wait unless there's concern about the holidays getting away or something with it being December. Otherwise, unless you can figure something, Mark, I don't know why we, maybe we might need to put this out here.
I was thinking that what we might try to do was another mailing to the affected property owners with these changes, and basically say to them, based on the walkthrough that we had and some other input, you know, this is what it looks like now, and we plan on scheduling a public hearing in, what should say, in January, because we've got holidays coming up, this is November, right? We plan on scheduling a public hearing in January, but before we do that, if there's any more input that you have for us, please give that to us now. Because it's not like, I mean, we're creating a whole new section, you know, it's not like we're making one specific change to the zoning ordinance, we're creating a whole new section and kind of like to make sure we allow the maximum people can live.
There's quite a few houses around there.
Yeah, and, you know, we do have to have a discussion, there was one property owner that had some pretty specific questions, and we, you know, talked about it a little bit in here, but we also, Andy put together, I think he may have lived today, a, this chart that you see in the front here, setbacks, and minimum maximum and all that, he's taken that and created for every single district in this only ordinance, so you can see a sort of a comparison of what we have from one district to another, which I think maybe is going to open us up to perhaps some additional questions and certainly, you know, force me to ask some questions that I think we ought to explore with the planning commission. And even in the mixed use, and one of them is building height, and maybe even having a discussion about building height, we wanted it to 40 feet right now throughout the city, but when we get into C2, I'm not even sure all the downtown buildings conform to that 40 feet in the C2 district, but as we talk about mixed use as well, would we be willing to look at maybe a taller building, and maybe a four-story building? So those are the kinds of discussions that, that's specific to mixed use, but those are the kinds of discussions that I think this chart will help you with as well, and I kind of like to bring that to your December meeting and open that up and add some of that discussion.
So we want to, what do we want to do with it right now, just can't take it, right?
You can't, why, I was just saying before, you didn't have to.
Well, we're not, we don't want to set up a meeting until after the first of the year?
That would be my suggestion.
The holidays and everything, yeah.
I'd really like to do another mailing to the affected business owners and try to get that out as soon as possible, and, you know, give them plenty of time to react, and we received a couple of comments, but I hate to go into a public hearing and all of a sudden, at the public hearing, we get, you know, several people showing up and saying, well, what about this, or what about that, or what about that, and then sort of have to back off after the public hearing to try to address those issues, and try to let to address as many as we can beforehand. It's not saying we're going to get everything, but at least, you know, we've made the effort.
Yeah. Makes sense.
So, you know, maybe a January, maybe a January public hearing.
So we need a motion for that?
You do not have to pass a motion to set up a public hearing, but maybe we'll just tell you that we're going to plan on that, if that's okay with you, and that's kind of the time schedule, then?
Sounds good.
So we're prepared?
Yeah.
And for the holidays?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be good, so we done with that, we move on to new business? Rezoning from industrial? How does that sound?
Yeah, I can, we can, with somebody who's interested in dividing a property, five dollars, 5312 million, Mark?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
And I apologize, this is one for me to cover, and I apologize, I'm checking my phone and going to the meeting, but my wife has been traveling from DC and having all kinds of problems, and I just had to, I need to make sure she's okay. She was just trying to call me. You know most of it, go ahead and cover it.
Yeah, so the purpose of the rezoning, there's somebody that's looking at dividing property, and currently the property over there, this is across the street where Wal Granite is, and that whole block is zoned industrial, and in the industrial district, there's a minimum lot width of 100 feet, and there's a little piece at the back there that somebody wants to divide and then Wal Granite cannot, can, that acquire that extra park point to the, I guess it would be east zone. And so by, because it's zoned industrial and because there's a minimum 100 foot lot width, that split cannot happen, basically. And so by rezoning it to C2, where there is no minimum lot area requirement or a minimum lot width requirement, that split can happen, that property can be created and built on it, and with, without creating any kind of non-conforming issue with regards to land use and all of that, so it's a way to make a pretty simple thing happen, but right now the ordinance, because the way that the dimensional standards are written for that property, which don't really make a lot of sense for that specific property, it'll allow that to go forward. That's kind of the long and short of it.
Now, would that open it up for a lot of other properties that are zoned like that?
I think that's it, I think those are the only properties that are really a part of the downtown that are zoned, that are zoned industrial. And that's really the only, the only one that I can think of that would have an issue like that. One thing I do want to double check and make sure is that what he does is something that's permitted in C2, because I wouldn't want to make change to the ordinance that would make his use not conforming anymore, since a lot of our discussions have been about making sure people are conforming and trying to minimize him on non-conforming uses and things like that.
Many again, he would have to do to conform.
Yeah. Well, he would have to, with the way that the mixed use is written, you know, any change that he has to make would have to become more conforming. With use, it gets a little unusual, because even if the building is okay, the use of the property still might not be conforming, so I don't know exactly how we classify that particular business or operation, but we'd have, I just want to double check in C2 that it's, that it's allowed before we did that, but I don't see any other major issues with it. You know, looking in the master plan, quite a bit of that whole area is all part of the downtown, potential use designation, so it meets those kinds of criteria, I think. I think it'll be a pretty straightforward process, Mark, you have anything?
Yeah, I think so. The map is in Anka, looks like this. And the issues, this is a combination of new technology and old technology, it's the Regis maps with Sharpie. But the parcels that we're talking about are the larger parcels for this Superior Furniture Building, and you see that D is the one that is proposed to be split off, but that, it's proposed to be split off from that larger L-shaped parcel. And then the next one over to the east is, is another parcel, it's got the big dash O12 in the middle of it, where it's 318 Main Street, that show up, okay, in your copy. So it would be those two parcels that we would propose to rezonate C2. The, the plan, the big plan is that if you look over at A, the city has already purchased parcel A, parcel B is under a lease between the city and King Milling, and by the way, potential layout of parking is on the back of this map, if you want to look at that. But parcel C is still owned by Wal Granite, and then parcel D is owned by Superior Furniture, and there's a third party involved that is working on purchasing parcel D in order to swap it with parcel C with Wal Granite, so eventually Wal Granite will own that entire strip. The, one of the zoning issues eventually is going to be Wal Granite is industrial, is industrial use, it's all zoned industrial right now, and if you were to purchase that parcel and it's zoned C2, we'll have to start to look at the uses and try to get that to match. and if you were to purchase that parcel and it's zoned C2, we'll have to start to look at the uses and try to get that to match up, and maybe even turn around and rezonate it to something else, or maybe a bit of a mixed use, or maybe even look at like industrial, or I don't know, and those are things that we need to sit down and discuss with the property owner and discuss at this level as well. But in order to split the parcel and meet the minimum lot width requirements, it has to be rezoned C2. So in order to get it to go rolling, we need to-
It's the first step, probably.
Yeah, and eventually, the Superior Furniture may be rezoned as mixed use, but we'd like to keep the process rolling in terms of the split, and then the swap of the properties, and then get ourselves set up to be able to build this parking lot yet next spring. The process for a rezoning, and that's, if you had a footback, I typed up this process for many of the zoning ordinance, so that people can see what's included, not only in our zoning ordinance, but what's included in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and Andy helped quite a bit with the zoning enabling act and forwarding that information. The timeline then would be, well, one of the, one of the issues is that a written application can be initiated by either a public agency or an interested person, by any commission or the city council. And one of the reasons that we have it on your agenda tonight is to ask whether or not you'd be willing to, and this, you wouldn't take a vote on it, but whether or not you'd be willing to initiate the process. And as a public agency, I think probably City Hall could, but I want to get some reading from the planning commission before we start it, and so if you say it's okay, if you initiate the process, that seems to me to be a little bit cleaner.
And that'd just enable more businesses to be put around there, right?
It would, and the C, the C2 in the long run, if we never were talking about mixed use, the C2 in the long run fits what the property owner is already talking about doing in that building, in that old Superior Furniture building. And in fact, you know, he's running out some space and things like that in that building, that are more aligned with C2 activities than they are with industrial activities. It's just, it's not going to be a factory again, it's not, it's not going to have that kind of use, and really, the conversion to something that's C2 or that's, you know, more commercial retail in nature really is better for the downtown, it's a better fit for this area. So on the back of that, that other sheet is a timeline, a potential timeline, if you initiated the process tonight, we'd move forward with the notices and setting a public hearing for your next meeting, and then ultimately, the council would have to receive your recommendation and then make a final decision. Also included in your packet, if you go backwards again, just as the email from the property owner, because typically, you wouldn't initiate a rezoning without the property owner saying, yeah, I'd agree to that. You can technically, but you really want to get a lot of input and support from the property owner, and listen to the email from the property owner saying, yeah, I support the idea of moving to C2.
Okay, I like the idea. So mainly, we just need a motion to approve that?
You initiate the process of rezoning. Probably those two addresses, we'll probably insert those two addresses into the motion.
Well, a motion for 318 East and 312 East thing?
Yes.
Paul, yeah?
Yes.
Nate?
Thank you very much.
Now to staff people?
Yeah, I have enough leaders staffed for it.
Okay, Commissioner remarks then? Tim?
No.
None? None?
They got nothing?
Okay.
Nothing for me?
No, one thing left.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll sign it.
Paul, yeah? Let's go.
Yes.
Okay. You learned that at 7:34, bye.